All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call our August regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Good to see everyone. Wonderful weather after a few days of monsoonish rains. Glad that you all found your way here safely. All right, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. She's going to be the first. Okay, it's been moved by Renee.
Yeah, I just have a question. For us to talk about the director evaluation, does that need to be underneath this?
You want to add it?
Or would that be an update under personal?
It should be. No changes? Okay. All right, so it has been moved and seconded. Moved by Renee, seconded by Kathy, that we approved the agenda as printed. Any discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, I will bring us to the approval of July minutes. Crystal did distribute those earlier in the week. I hope that you have a chance to take a look at those. I will entertain a motion for approval of the July board minutes. Hope that we approve the minutes from July. It can move by Jim and seconded by Delara that we approved the board minutes from July. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That will bring us to the treasurer's report. Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
Who did the board approve the July two thousand twenty-four operating bills totaling three hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred four dollars and eighty-two cents?
Okay, it's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Sharon that we would approve operating bills on the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-two.
Four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Three hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred four dollars and eighty-two cents. Any discussion?
Okay, so for here.
Well, there's one where it was summer inspection and maintenance of the RTUs for both Farmington and Farmington. Oh, yeah, and then four seasons unit cooling and replacement of parts at Farmington. I think, and then again at Farmington coil cleaning and RTU not working or not cooling and they had to reset the controls.
I'd like to ask, what is PayLo City?
PayLo City, that's the one that does our, our time sheets and our payroll.
That's the payroll. And I know you mentioned it was before. The difference in an item showing up on the top page of America and the bottom?
Those are electronically set up. They're set up for just automatic.
So the top ones are electronic and the bottom ones are?
Come to bill.com.
So the ones in that top portion are like on a direct electronic funds transfer draft from the bank. These others are paid through bill.com, which bill.com, just for transparency, really is our total invoicing system. So the invoices put there, it goes through a validation point with staff, and then it goes through a four-point approval process running through Kelly, Kathy, and then to myself, and we all are logged into bill.com and can see, you know, all those transactions that are going on there.
So the same people should, the same payees should show up each month in the top. There shouldn't be any changes to that, really, because they've got a direct line to them.
Yep, unless we were to add some new vendors to that, but I don't know.
Usually like the pay phone, the pay, the phone bill or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think Toshiba, I wouldn't think that they would be there.
I think quarterly, we pay, I don't know if it's every month or quarterly. I can't remember what E H I M stands for, but I'm not sure that they're every month.
E H I M is the.
Insurance.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. Pretty much everything else, yes.
Pretty much everything should be on the bottom.
But they are all regular skip. These are all things that we pay us on regular.
And, and I assume that bill.com is a vendor that we pay to service our bills?
Plant Moran, they've set it up.
Because we can see everything that's on the invoice and, you know, and any check requests and what those are for. That's why I get all this info that I break down.
Oh, it's well worth it.
Yeah.
And how much is their service cost to you?
Well, it's a.
Oh, it's part of Plant Moran.
Yeah, so I think in the bottom, if you look at an invoice from Plant Moran, it will tell you how much bill.com pays, but I don't remember.
Oh, okay. So it's part of Plant Moran?
It's a system they use and they set it up with it.
You'll just, Schindler elevator is that still painted on or am I writing that up? Is that on the second page?
Yeah, on what maintenance, we're looking to actually identify a different vendor.
Yes, yeah.
Future, but.
I just have the check. There was some kind of repairs done at F A, at Farmington. And then also the other was repaired, other electrical components had from, so they were both.
Any questions?
This came up when we were meeting, just noticing McCoy maintenance for the. Yes. Yeah, I think we talked about getting other quotes. We looked at the contract and it's a thirty-day notice. But we have to go and get a quote, probably have to go to bid.
Yeah, that did come off its topic last time. Any other questions? All right, seeing no further questions, all of those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved to receive and file the July two thousand twenty-four financial reports.
Like Kathy and seconded by Renee that we receive and file the financial reports. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to friends of the library. We know we don't have our beloved leader here today. Do you have any updates from State Secret Prince?
I do not.
Thank you. That'll take us to the director's report. Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Do you have any questions about what I currently wrote? If you, if you've noticed, we have been waiting. There is a comment in your things about the waiting. I have talked to that person and.
Also came out last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, so I've already talked to him. He's fine.
Yes, I know that we, we get, I think with Fontaine, they spray. So I've noticed that there's quite a lot of. Big sprays. I can ask. I don't know what they're, like by the back door. I mean, when that place where the bill goes up is huge.
We would have asked.
Yeah.
So our pickup lockers are arriving next week, so we're very excited about that. The. It's kind of a several-step process, so they arrive for installation next week, but the wrap, the colorful wrap won't be on it until September, I think.
That was what I had pushed.
Yeah, I think I have it here. Locker's still running the fifteenth, I think so, which is the company arrives on August, August twentieth to train staff. The vendor rep, oh, no, the vendor rep comes out on the twenty-ninth of August. He says he's trying to get them out sooner, but, and then there's a back order on the dehumidifier. Dehumidifier package, so that installation will be in September, so there's multi-step process here.
So do they come back and install the wrap?
No, no, they, they will install it.
When do we dehumidify?
It's because it's hot and humid and it inside, so the materials don't get warped or whatever. So it's inside the locker.
And that only runs during.
It will only rush, yeah, that's right.
I would imagine inside that metal box at temperatures, it's probably over a hundred degrees.
Right, right.
Without cooling.
Right, so, yeah. So we're excited to get that up and running.
Remind me again where the lockers are going?
Right outside the front doors to the side.
Across the low statue, the lady?
Yes, behind it. It's right up kind of under the awning by the doors.
Okay, the awning doesn't run all the way to the building, but it has an awning over the lockers.
When, when will the lockers be in use?
That's a good question, because until staffers have been trained, probably. So I, I hear it's very easy, but we'll see. That's what they say.
Maybe September, my check really is.
Maybe.
Because they come.
Yes, soft, don't they? Yeah. And introduction on the extravaganza, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
So. Okay, so we have our yearly informational meeting from MERS for the staff to understand the retirement options and how it works and best practices to save. So that's coming out on August nineteenth. A little snapshot of bereavement overtime and turnover rate for this past year, just so you guys know what's going on. We've reduced the overtime cost, as you can see, over the past year. And turnover rate's a little higher. We had two retirements. Four shelters left, something like that, you know. One person was here for one day, so you have to include them. One person was here for three days.
I don't know, maybe we just said our virtual path orientation.
Maybe six months or something. Yeah, I don't know, so. Save the date and evening with Bill Shipman is coming on October twenty-first. So, yeah, staff announcement, Jenny Willard, our young adult librarian, she is leaving to become a director. Good for her. It's over by Callum the Zoo, and so, but that's where her family is, so she is quite happy to be. That's where they all are, and she has two new nieces and nephews, so. So she's happy. And Farin decided that she would just like to devote her time to just regular old librarian responsibilities, so she stepped down from the assistant adult head position. She's still staying, she's staying up. Yeah, but she's spending more time on the things she didn't love and rather spent time on the things she did love. So we, we accept that.
That's always a struggle when you brought over.
Yeah. No, not yet. We're, we're thinking about that. We will be posting for a young adult librarian shortly to replace her. And then, of course, on August twenty-second, that's when they're going to do the water meter valve replacement. They tell us they're going to be done for eight to ten hours, so we are going to have to close the twelve mile library on it. Probably not reopen it until the next day.
So how, how long ago did she tell you that she was recently?
August, no, July, end of July.
So why wouldn't she post that right away so the person could come and get a little training before she?
Because we had to decide what we were posting for, and so we still haven't really decided, we're still deciding, so, yeah. Yeah, so there's a little bit of conversation going on there.
What's the process for department head? Do you appoint somebody?
An assistant department head or a department? Well, it's, it would be an internal posting only, because there's really not an open position, because Farin didn't actually leave. So you have to post internally, so we see what who's interested, and then we do a little interview. I also have in your. Just so you know, your pile of stuff, it's this library extravaganza, this is kind of like the. This is kind of like what's going to happen, very draft move. Some of it's not been updated, because you can see Jenny's name is still on here, but this is, I think, what we've decided. The stations that will be, I don't remember if you were last, there were all kinds of stations you could go to. There will still be the same thing where you can get into the drawing if you finish your little. Favorite or something, whatever it is, yeah. And then. So do we remember this conversation? I think we were thinking of putting something on the stickers. Well, yeah, instead of checking off, you might, they might be able to take, no, on the, when they turned in their little raffle or fill it, like a question. Survey. Like it's a little like quick, you know how we're talking about quick pulse surveys, there's going to be a little question on there. And I can't remember what the question was. It was like one simple question, just to, how did you hear about it? Have you visited the library? I don't remember what it was. Oh, it was, is this your first time visiting the Farmington Community Library, so that we could see if this was there? If we attracted anybody new to the event, and if this was attracting anybody that never kinds of library before. And you have made an email for the person? It'll be at the desk where they fill out them.
I'm assuming that you won't, you just allow them to, they don't have to tell us who they are, they'll just.
Well, if they want to enter the raffle, they can. Raffle ticket.
I see, yes, okay, because I heard Renee say you have the names, but I can't how the raffle.
Yeah, yeah, most people want to enter. That's just one way to get to see if this is attracting somebody new in the, in the community or just.
It's a party for all of our.
Right, regulars, right? Yes, I do want board members. I think you should be the greater, so.
I know Jim, you were also at that door with me as well.
Well, every two years. We didn't do it last. It's a big event. It takes, Farmington will be closed that day to have all hands on deck here, so.
Well, I think by then, there should be items that we.
Oh, we can't do the knowledge.
Well, there, there will be informational pieces.
There'll be factual pieces that you could.
That we can distribute, for sure. That this, this staff will have here as well, so I think that's what we'll stick to that day.
Got it.
The reason I ask that is, it was some annual, and you, you know, you'd like to trust these all a little bit a few months ahead of time. You'll try to make sure that you're available for that, for that, you know, for that date. Because you can change your schedules a little bit, so I just, that's why I just suggest if you know ahead of time that you're going to be doing the events.
Remember the, all the games were extremely popular with online.
Yes, yes. We have two food trucks this time.
Something else, good.
One of them is an ice cream.
But we had great weather the last time.
It'll be great weather this time, too. It's just, you know, there's, there's no other thought process other than great, but.
Agree, you know, and, or maybe you get a rain insurance policy just in case, and you can at least benefit if it does rain.
You know what, only you can sign and turn out. You know how to pivot. We're just open the air conditioner. Yeah, so, okay, that's that, and then. The other thing I put in your packet was, this is the thing that has been going on since two thousand eighteen, the Foster Swift Bank. The minimum wage and earn sick time, this is where it's, it keeps flipping back and forth in the courts. Well, now the Supreme Courts decided that the lawmakers were, it was illegal for them to change what the voters had voted on. So on February twenty-first, it's going to revert to a minimum wage, which is somewhere in the aisle here on the backside. The minimum wage is not going to affect us so much unless the inflation rate is more than. Or something, more than thirteen oh three, because if you remember, I bumped up that minimum wage salary and the personnel and the budget for this year, just in case we have this problem. So we should be fine with that. The one that is going to affect us somewhat is the Earn Sick Time Act. So a large employer, which is defined as some more than ten employees, I think it's fifty employees, I think. Oh, no, more than ten employees. We must provide seventy-two hours of basic leave for substitutes, shelters and aides, all staff. Temporary employees, part-time employees, independent contractors.
Right, and I think in that, and that pushes you to a place where you decide whether you even engage that employee classification. You have to think about that.
Right, so I, I contacted Mike and just had some questions, and I included his response in, in it. I'm going to have more questions, so. His thing is. It's more about you earn one hour of sick time for every thirty hours rather than the seventy-two hours. That's.
It would be parrot of example with their route.
Yeah, and so for them to hit thirty hours, it could take them two weeks to even one hour, okay. But anyway, he says, it appears your current policy is more generous than the ESTA requires, because the ESTA does not require replenishment of sick time when employees use sick time that has been earned. So our current policy for full-time and part-time. They get so much, they earn so much. When they hit max, they don't earn anymore, but if they take it, they earn back up to max, so you technically were more generous than the policy allows for, so it's going to be the same concept. Max is still five hundred and twenty hours, but that's for full-time. Part-time is three twelve, I believe. And then the shelters and aides, the lower groups of everyone, we had already given them twenty hours. I think we have to give them maximum of seventy-two hours, but they'll never hit that.
Right, what we, what we gave them with the twenty is more generous than what they would have heard.
Right.
Under this.
Exactly, so I gotta, I gotta verify with that with him, because if they earn more than we already have, are we still in compliance? Do you know what I mean? So once we get it figured out, I'm going to go back to the sale.
Well, yeah, in my mind, it, I think it's going to be if they literally work more, especially if they're free more than twenty, then we'll have to award them, whatever that.
Right. Right. Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted you to verify that. Doesn't take effect till February twenty-first.
One thing that's extremely, when was the harvest move? That the next weekend?
On harvest, we will.
Yeah, because we are, we are.
Right, and that is okay.
It's not on Sunday anyway.
I know, but people, I don't see them.
Right, all right, so. All right, any?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we could put it at the TV.
I mean, we could be playing it on one, we have a screen right here.
Little seating area.
The hangout room. We have the ending machine.
No, not anymore. I think that did, is there any question? Oh, I just wanted to point out these, Sona designed these, and this is for you to give out when you're out and about. We have some in the library. We should be putting them around the community. It's just a ten things to do at the library, and it illustrates some of the things. So when you're talking to somebody about the library, you should just, there you go, that's what you can do at the library.
Especially that person who says, I haven't been to the library in so long.
We've had tell us. We need to get new ones, so they're, they're old.
Well, they're actually arriving on six.
There you go.
Five brand new. I think they're, well, the old ones have been destroyed, because they have been here for so long, they're touched out by so much. So now they're going to be used as spare parts for when these new ones need to.
I did notice in your report, I think on the extravaganza, or as one of the activities listed, that there was some exploration of the repurposed Heritage Room, which is now the place for the Library of Things. Do you guys want to talk about that a little bit? And I guess I would be interested to understand what is happening with the Heritage Room? Or have we decommissioned that piece of our work, or what's happening?
So what, basically what's in there right now is the 3D printer. Yeah, and the convert, conversion station, cricket machine, I believe, is in there, and then the library things, but. Dr. Crystal, I think we really need all the library things out into the main areas. Well, the reason that the library things was moved in there is because the small shelving unit that we had out kind of in that center area, it kind of outgrew that. We just put that shelving unit out there mainly because we wanted awareness, and also because we put the Friends, well, the Friends Library sponsored the initial Library of Things, and we put that out there for the gala for them to see. Quickly outgrew that space. We put it in there, because now we're filling the shelves with everything. Once the master plan is in place, there is a, the thought is to have it out on the main floor. In fact, a pretty significant section of the library dedicated to the Library of Things, because I guess my mind and, and Crystal Corbin's opinion, that's kind of where the future of the library is going, not so much, you know, printed materials as the focus, but objects that you can check out. So long-term, we would like it to have more of a prominent, permanent place. Until then, it's there. We are working with, so Wes Schumacher, who is one of our new librarians, he is taking over the Library of Things. I'm transitioning that collection to him. He's working with Sarah to get some improved signage, so it's very obvious that it's in there. However, we can work on getting some additional shelving that's more out on the main floor to put some of the library things out there, because we do have like a whole baking, cooking collection that maybe that could go out there and more of the larger games and things like that could stay in the Heritage Room, something we can work on that.
Yeah, I think the idea, work with Sarah on the wayfinding is great and make it fun. I know she will. I could see someone at the door like, don't forget to check out the Library of Things. And then there's kind of wayfinders around the library pointing you to the Heritage Room, which is kind of off the beaten path a little bit. Uh, so yeah, thank you for that. What about the Heritage Room? The material that. Well, and the reason I bring that up is because we had some feedback around. Even the heritage material, the historical material that was on the website. And, and that not being available. So I just wanna understand what our strategy is.
Oh, I can answer. I mean. So. The, uh, the materials that were in the Heritage Room on those shelves. Um, that either got, it went to one of two places, either in the archive itself. Because it was of local interest and it was precious material that we did not want to be out for circulation. Or it was put out in the regular collection because it could be circulated. There was also a lot of books in there that had nothing to do with Michigan history or local history like. Families from Pennsylvania or, you know what I mean? Cause a lot of stuff that was in there was just. Genealogical books or things that people really didn't wanna get rid of, but they wanted to donate to the library. So I think we. Were like, oh, we'll take them and put them in the collection, even though it had nothing to do with any local family had.
But I wonder about that because when I think about the Pennsylvania connection and the Quaker ties, right, that probably were related to.
Well.
Farmington, definitely.
There might be some truth to that. However, um, Judy Donlin, who was kind of our. Before she retired, she worked very closely with the Historical Society and Genealogical Society. She had them go through and vet those materials and they were the ones who told us, this is relevant, this is not relevant. So. It wasn't just somebody who was like, oh, this has nothing to do with anything, we just got rid of it. They were the ones who were like, yeah, this has. This was, no, this has nothing to do with anything. I don't know why we have this. So, we do still have the archive. There's a ton of material in there, um, that we plan to keep forever. Um, there's some stuff though, like the Musicle, we were keeping their archives. They're no longer in existence. Uh, Judy contacted their members, asked them if they wanted to take their, their stuff. They took some of it. Um, there were other, I think there were one or two other groups like that, that we were just. Storing their archives for them. That.
Go ahead, Joe. I was gonna ask, is the archive, can anyone? Okay, so who, what's the point of the archive? If keeping it, but like, could, could anyone, like, like in another archive, can researchers make an appointment or can they use it?
We can get it. We would get it for you.
We would get them out, out from, like, the stuff that we have in the archive is like. The, um. Like the school year books.
Yeah.
Going all the way back to the beginning. We have. Obituaries and newspaper clipping files. We have photographs, we have genealogies, we have. Um, like notebooks from some of like the early settlers. There's stuff in there that we would never get rid of.
Okay.
Um, so. And all of that has been maintained and catalogued by, um, Rebecca. Who had an archival certificate. She's done some of that stuff. Crystal, who has archival certificate. Judy, we had volunteers. Um, come in and, and do that stuff too, so.
So you're still collecting the yearbooks up here?
Yes.
And then. Did you happen to contact the Detroit Public Library to see if they wanted any of those historical things that you didn't feel relevant?
That was all handled by Judy, so I don't know.
Well, um, thanks for that update. That's good to know. Um. I would encourage us, you know, to, uh. Try to look at what things in this archive, uh, that have been retained, could be digitized or made available to the public. Position. Um, I would also encourage us to make public an inventory of the things that are in the archive, so people would have any idea that those things exist. That you can know where to, to find them.
The images are digitized. We're part of a group called the Oakland County Historical Resources Commission, and so. A lot of the stuff is digitized, so it's available through that resource.
Okay, and do we link to that on our website as well?
So, it is.
That got hacked.
I was gonna say, I was told that that was taken down and that.
It was taken down because. Number one, number one, the software they were using was obsolete. And, um, it was very cumbersome to upload photos and you couldn't find it. You couldn't search, you know, it was, it was crazy and stuff like that. But then. Who was it? Is it Clarkson? I think it's Clarkson Library, right? Uh, they're the ones who owned it, so to speak, on their server and stuff, and then they got hacked. And so I don't know if, that was what, a year ago? I don't know if it came back. And, um. So. It's been unusable, unusable for a while. So that OCR, Oakland County HR, whatever it is. Was looking for more updated software. So that, um. It would be easier to upload the files to and. Then it just, everything just got dropped and. We belong to it and we pay dues to it, but. They haven't moved on it that I know. So I've been looking at, and when you go to PLA or ALA, they. You know, I'm looking at, maybe we need our own software instead of joining this group.
I mean, I, I think about it. We used to have a section on our old site, which was even an older version of the site that had a lot of detailed information. Well, you couldn't, but it was there. So I thought, I guess I thought that that stuff would reemerge into our new site in some way, shape or form. Right, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm hearing this conversation, um, and I just don't want us to lose sight of our past. Uh, if you forget the past, uh, bad things can happen in the future. And so I. I, and I'm a history buff personally. As we talk to people more and more, I think generations are becoming more disconnected, right? Uh, from one another through that lack of shared common experience. And so a lot of ways you get to understand that and get a sense of, well, what was it like in? This period of time when these people were doing this stuff to go and sit and look at those materials or read those narratives. Uh, and it's something that I personally enjoy doing. So I don't think a lot of the patrons probably do too.
I think all the yearbooks, um.
Well, I didn't go to school here, Kathy. All the yearbooks from everywhere online now, though. That's the thing about.
We got the yearbooks digitized, I wanna say five years ago. It was through a nonprofit program where they send them to a prison and prisoners digitize the yearbooks for free.
Really?
Yeah.
All of them?
Well, all of them up until.
I mean, for each high school and, and middle school?
Yeah, we bought some up and sent them to the prison and they digitized them. And, um, they're on CDs. Uh, however, there are, we don't put them online because there's some issues of privacy. Because you don't wanna put pictures of minor children online. So, um, they are digitized. We just haven't made them available online because of that concern.
What would be the benefit of us having our own archive? Like digital searchable thing as opposed to being part of a collection or like that we're paying dues to and they do it.
Uh, there's probably no benefit. It just depends on the time you're, you're relying on.
Yeah, just so you know, it's done.
Yeah.
Well, like, the issue is you're waiting on that body to decide how they want to manage with this, yeah. Lots of detailed information there. Appreciate those updates. Um. Any other questions? For Kelly? Thank you very much. Uh, that will take us to unfinished business. I do not believe we have any unfinished business. So that will take us to subcommittee updates and, uh, Kathy, do we have anything from the finance committee?
Well, we have. Not the committee itself, cause the committee hasn't. Um, but I have some things that I would like to call.
Probably do it finance, I guess, as, um, committee of the whole at this point. The only members on the finance committee at this point are myself and Kathy.
So in Michigan class, we earned twenty-one thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents in interest in July. With a year-to-date total of eighty-two thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents. And the daily yield that's on July thirty-first was five point three seven seven zero. The next thing is I have not yet transferred the four million dollars into Michigan class that we approved last month, as I was asked to see what Comerica had to offer.
Well, let me just say, I didn't wanna, uh, I didn't want you to hold up on that necessarily, but.
I didn't. Our current money market in Comerica has a two point seventy-two percent interest rate. We would need to open another money market account and transfer our monies into that to begin to receive. Their four point two five percent interest rate, which is compounded months.
Daily in class.
Correct. So I think that we should transfer our four million into Michigan classes. Our interest rate is better and is compounded daily. If we wanted to transfer the remaining Comerica amount of, of our money markets into the new money market, we could. But I'm not sure if that would affect any electronic transactions that we produce. What, is that just the regular checking account?
That's the money market. That's the only way I can tell them.
I, I mean, I think you guys can probably get together on that a little bit later even. But, but I think this is a question of. Do you wanna continue dealing with Comerica at all or, you know? Well, you do have other stuff in Comerica, uh. But I, I remember Kelly from Plant Moran telling us that. Some institutions are pretty much use this as their primary. Uh, I mean, they have another bank account, but like, they are using a whole lot of different accounts. They're kind of using this as the primary, maybe one operating account. So I'm just saying. And you evaluated Kathy, you know, I wanna take your recommendation. Any day of the week, but I, I wanna suggest, uh. Even think about what's gonna streamline things for the entire operation. And Kelly, you know, on a day to day. And as well as you do too, Kathy.
Yeah, um, I remember, and five, five, one, nine. So I think the one that goes comes out is a different one.
So we could talk about that. But I'm not sure about taking these other accounts out of Comerica.
All these electronic transfers to Comerica would all be affected if you made a different scenario.
Uh, no, I think that's a different account.
It's a different account.
Yeah, we have several.
So. I will look forward to, uh, maybe another recommendation from you guys on that. But in the meantime, you're gonna go ahead and make a transfer.
Tomorrow.
Okay, I also want to speak to, uh, about Sharon's thoughts on my transferring money in and out of Michigan class. Um, there are two authorized signers on the account, Kelly and myself, and two other contacts that have read-only access, which is Ernie. And Kelly from Plant. When any type of transaction occurs on the account, all four of us receive an email about what was done. So this fail-safe process protects monies from being handled.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Every time I see something, I call her phone. I never see anybody. No, I do understand nothing strange. I don't ever see anything that I.
Generates the concern about those questions. It's all the recent activity of, you know, mistaken errors in the nonprofit. So you just wanna say. Make sure we don't make any mistakes, right?
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Oh, you are welcome.
You mentioned that, uh, I'm part of another organization, just hiring a CPA firm that was. Heavily involved in that particular situation, and it was like. They were trying to explain themselves to this little bit. Right, Kathy, anything else on finance?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move on to the Personnel Committee and we'll turn it over to Delara.
Yeah, Kathy, Renee, and Phil, and if I missed anything, but we, um, last meeting talked about the evaluation of the director. But it's the thing that I think we're past due on. Or at the end of this affidavit. But we met and we talked about a process for this year and next year that we'd like to follow. And I could get to the actual evaluation itself. For twenty twenty-four, we were thinking. Over the next month, we would, um. Draft this evaluation. So we looked at what twenty twenty-three evaluation included. Some things felt out of our purview or just out of our scope to even evaluate accurately. Given our perspective and how we interact with the director role. Uh, so we took some of those things out. And added other things that we thought were important, uh, and kind of, so this is quite a bit longer evaluation than last time. And what we'd like is for some of this information, we need, uh, for us to be accurately. Rating this, we would need some additional information from you, Kelly. So over the next couple of weeks, if you can just give us. A report on anything that you think you can provide additional information on, um. And. And for the board to add that to look at when we go through our own evaluation. And then by the September board meeting, that we could come back and we can have. Like score and about evaluation. Anything to add?
What you would be giving us is kind of, if you can look this over, kind of let us know how you are dealing with that, so we know, cause there's something, so we can.
Okay, right, right. Just a, a short blur maybe on each section.
Okay. Yeah, please don't spend a ton of time, but if there's like data or anything that you can provide them.
So basically, uh, we're expecting Kelly to provide kind of a, a self appraisal.
Yes.
Of each of these hidden areas. So customer service and community relations, and she'd give us a narrative on that one and then walk or break. I think that's reasonable. And it gives you a chance to kind of reflect, and we talked about this last year too, when you do that, and it, it's somewhat identified experience, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
And then in twenty twenty-five, what we'd like, we don't have time this year to do it, but we would like to have some staff voice. Into this, and so we have. Kind of a list from last year's, um, evaluation and some things that we talked about this time. That we'd like to have in a staff survey, put that out. So over the next few months, we. Time to like, get that together for twenty twenty-five, so that can be part of, um, the full evaluation as well. So as far as the evaluation, I'm not sure if we're like, looking for approval on this or feedback.
Can I do a motion then? I can do a motion too. I'd like to make a motion for the board to approve the revised director's evaluation. Which has been recommended by the personnel. Or committee, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved by Renee and second by Kathy, uh, that would approve. The revised evaluation, a director's evaluation or evaluation of director. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let me know if I'm saying aye. Any opposed?
I have a historical question. Um, and Kelly, um, how long have you been the director and have you been evaluated before?
I've been the director for. Twenty twenty-one, three years, and yes.
It's so.
Yeah.
And some of this is taken from the previous. Yeah, but we expand.
If anyone's interested in seeing how this year's evaluation compares to last year's, I have that with the highlights and everything. I'd be happy to share that.
Um, I appreciate, uh, your work, your efforts, all of the committee members. And knowing who the members are, uh, I, and knowing who you are, I feel very confident. In this. Have a few more questions, I think it's okay, right? Cause you get into some more granular understanding. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness and effort that went into this.
Yeah, I think we wanted to make sure that it reflected the work that you do. There are certain things that we saw that we know happens, but it wasn't reflected in the evaluation. So yeah, certain things and then other things that we talked about that we thought were important. And maybe we didn't know about.
And you can blame any delays. And you can blame any delays on me, charge that to me, but I did, I did say in the last meeting that we were behind in this. Uh, we did, we tried to have this co-signing, I think, with your process here in the building. Uh, and I don't know if we met that mark this year, so our apologies.
It'll be more times.
Yeah, those, those things are important, they really are.
For, I think we were trying to um figure out from last time how it would go when we do the evaluation, so. Once we get Kelly's report, and you can share that with me, and I can uh share it with the board along with the evaluation, I'd like to have like an electronic one too, if you just wanna do it on the survey form. Um, and then would we, I compiled the results and bring it to September's meeting? And then do we discuss that as a group, like how is it?
Oh, wait, I can't, I thought we were waiting for Kelly to, that would be September, we wouldn't get then.
So I have a couple weeks to do it.
And then we have to turn around a bit. Well, that's, this is what I will, I can only speak to last year, right? I think that was the first process that we ran after Kelly, um. We, we, we basically had the responses turned in to Personnel Committee. Um, I basically shared kind of the tally of all of the results with the Personnel Committee, but there wasn't really um any quote discussion. Um, it was truly that that average score equated to to her rating. So there, there wasn't any discussion, I think it was uh the sense that trustees that provided their feedback grew the tool to perform itself.
We went out to ten.
Oh, that is true, okay, so I forgot about. Okay, and let me, and let me say, because that's a nod to the net, uh, the net really um wanted to to be sure that, you know, aside from just the appraisal, right? It's really about keeping good relations with our director and having a real conversation and and just being with people. So, yes, we did deliver the review to her at Peterland's, I think.
Right, right.
Um, but that was really more of a conversation, um, and uh we didn't sit there and go through stuff. Um, but we did talk about the future of the library and all the great things that have happened over the past year, so, um, yeah. And I'm totally open to doing that again. Anything else for Personnel? Thank you so much. Is that, is that the final?
Or did you have vote?
Oh, we didn't have.
Motion would be.
Sorry. We voted on, we voted on accepting this document, but um, yeah, we don't have to make a vote. But, okay, so I'm unclear on the, so the timing. So I'm, I'm going to get a document of you, and then I have to turn around and and make sure I have all my scores submitted at the September meeting or. And you get.
So that we can.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Are you gonna try to, because you have error.
Issues though.
I don't know, that's I am too.
So what's the date today, August thirteenth? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Today is August eighth, so Kelly, do you?
I can get you, I can get it to you, how soon do you want it?
Pepper is realistic.
Okay, so today's the eighth, and then there's the fifteenth. I should be able to have something to you by, let's say fifteen, fifteen, twenty, twenty, twenty fifth, Sunday the twenty fifth, is that good enough?
Yeah, that's my birthday, so.
Oh, exactly, right, okay.
Wow, that's definitely.
Right.
So that leaves.
That's where I don't see this can end.
Well, do you want me to do it sooner? I mean, I could do it sooner.
Well, I'm just, okay.
I don't think so, cuz that leaves one, two, three full weeks for us to distribute the evaluation and if by the September meeting, and I would tally up the scores and bring it.
Do you want me to back it up a week?
Well, I'm, okay, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody, but this is this will be vacation time per Maria's recommendation. I, I just know that, yeah, between now and September is not the best time for me to get this done, sir. I know. Well, I, I'm just, I, well, maybe I have to speak for other people, in case other people feel the same way. I mean, we're running into, and maybe you don't, I just think that's a, I just think I, um especially if you wouldn't. I wouldn't say this, I feel like this is more time than we did it in last year. I feel like it felt like it was more compressed last.